Call the meeting to order to sign the rule, please yourself.
Evan.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester. Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Here.
North D'Antvo.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage. Sparta.
Here.
Springwater. Westfarta. York.
Like to ask Hyundai Supervisor Merrill Lee Washington if we see this.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Would I like to ask for a brief moment of silence? One of supervisors who have fueled the story several years ago, Jim Layland from Caledonia passed through this week. There's going to be some calling hours, I believe. Is it Dan on Friday? Friday, four to seven at Al Hartman's booth home. And then Sunday they'll have a service at home. Thank you. I would just, at this time, a brief moment of silence. We do have our last set of board meeting minutes, our last regular meeting, January 11th, to consider. Is there any discussion, anyone wishing to bring forward any corrections to this draft set of minutes? Hearing non-ideas or motion in the second place.
Motion, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unmissed? Carried? This time I'd like to ask Bill Bacon to please come forward and introduce two public hearings we're going to have this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, everyone.
Yes.
Jim Layland is on the floor. We're first, Jim, on the eighteenth floor. He's here on the floor. Today's public hearing, and I have two of them. The first one is in regards to the County's Community Development Block Grant Contract with the New York State Office of Community Renewal, or OCR, for the OSB Cider Works Expansion Project in Yonah. This is a follow-up hearing, as required by policy by the OCR, which states that a founder or recipient of CDVG funds must hold the second public hearing to report project accomplishments. The county was awarded $100,000 grant on March 12th, 2020. Grant proceeds of $86,000 have been cast on the OSB Cider Works in the financial reimbursement for machinery and equipment purchase. By policy, CDVG funds are limited within the margin of no more than 40% of the overall investment. The project was significantly delayed due to the business and construction shutdowns during the COVID-19 pandemic, but is now nearing completion. The project consisted of a new 2,400-square-foot production space, which juggles current production and once fully operational, put a spare casing room into the existing production space in the original building. The project has thus far resulted in the creation of two new office and clerical positions and three new production positions. Additional distribution and taproom positions are anticipated this year. Prior to this project, the company was producing approximately 19,000 gallons of cider a year. Last year, they produced approximately 30,000 gallons and are on track to produce 40,000 gallons this year, doubling their production. Distribution has increased to 210 bars and is on track to hit 300 this year. The second hearing, purpose of which is to provide information to the public regarding the Community Development Block Grant Small Business Program and to consider comment regarding the proposed application being requested for supplemental by Livingston County. CDVG's small business funds are available to municipalities to assist poor businesses to create or retain permanent employment, primarily for persons with low demand or income. Application, the amount of $100,000, which is being proposed to the New York State Office of Community Renewal, provides funding for the barn of Firefruit Farms in the town of Yonah. Firefruit Farms is a small operation that currently grows, produce hay, soybeans, and wheat, and raises pigs, cows, chickens, turkeys, and bees. Additionally, the owners operate a CS heading, a farm store. The planned project involves the renovation of an existing barn on the farm property to create a commercial kitchen that will provide entrepreneurial agriculture opportunities for specialty food processors, farmers, growers, and producers. Event space in the barn will be focused on offering agriculture-related events such as demonstrations, cooking or cannon classes, and pop-up farm-to-table dinners for an educational purpose. The project was a winner of the Economic Development Office's June of the Business Competition in 2021. Since that time, we have been working with the owners of Firefruit Farms to refine their plan and their budget. CDVG funding will not exceed 40% of the total project cost and will be used for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. A minimum of four full-time equivalent jobs are also anticipated. Pending a successful outcome of the grant application, it is proposed that the county will then enter into sub-receivable agreement with the Livingston County Development Corporation to administer the funding.
Thank you, Bill. With both hearings open at this time, I'll ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to comment on either hearing. If any member of the public does wish to comment, they can please come forward, sign out at the podium, and state their position on either hearing. Ask if there's any members of Board of Supervisors at this time wishing to weigh in on either hearing. Hearings will remain open until the conclusion of the meeting, and I'll ask those same two questions again. We do have an abstract of plans to consider this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of plans and ask for your unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any question or discussion on this abstract of plans? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 180, absent 1829, adopted.
Next, we have privileges to the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for Don Mills, Executive Director of the Live Well Community Wellness and Fitness Center.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne.
Hello. Thanks again for having me today. Last time I was in front of the board was in September. We've worked diligently since then to continue to progress what we consider to be a real game-changing project for Livingston County and the surrounding area. Present today, I won't do as much time speaking as I did last time, which you're probably all relieved about. The present today is, we have Norm Gill, Managing Partner at Pinnacle Indoor Stores, who recently completed a market analysis and feasibility study for Livingston County in the vein of the community center that we are looking to design and develop. He'll have the opportunity to speak, answer questions, and I'll obviously be helpful as well. Andrew Garble from Max Infrastructure, who produced the rendering that you all saw as you walked into the room, and we shared with you with the slide that post-meeting is here as well, should you have any questions about the layout. And then Peter Bruckel and Joshua Bruckel, who has been involved with the project from an entrepreneurial standpoint and from an executive standpoint that I've worked with throughout six months, he's positioned as Executive Director here as well. But you know, just a quick hitters for the audience and everyone in the room. You know, when I was putting this together, I wanted to keep it about five minutes. Obviously, I was super excited about the projects we've made, but here are four quick bullet points that I think are important takeaways that lead you to Norman. You can go into further details about what he's discovered through interviews in our community. So really, when I look at this thing, you know, where do you start, right? After my office was set properly, and I shared with you guys the Christmas list, the wish list, the items, I said, you know what? We need to really take a hard look at this from a data standpoint. And that's what really led us to Norman. His firm is nationally recognized, I bet, and approved several sources in what they've developed community centers successfully from conception to construction, and now getting to this work further. And you know, I needed to build a team that could really deliver some concrete numbers for Livingston County. And then we talk about aligning priorities at county and state level. So, okay, you know, we're obviously working with constituents, you know, at the state level, at the regional level, and have a great team here at the county level, that have identified, you know, where Livingston County and New York State are and where we need to go. And you know, looking at items such as job creation, child care needs, and economic growth, population improvement, and retention is a couple key phrases that are approved to us. And then obviously, the continued development and opportunities for our youth, which are the future of the county. So then we get into some developing partnerships, and this is where the project really gets exciting for me personally. So as you look at Floor One, layout proposed currently of what will be the Live Well Community Wellness and Fitness Center, we've got some key partnerships I want to highlight. And really, you know, I've had six months to do a national review of similar facilities and options in communities. And really, what we're striving for here is progressive cutting-edge and really maximize this community opportunity. So if you look in the bottom of the layout area, the best of course, you see the office de-aging in Livingston County, which we have plain kitchen space, meeting space, administrative space, to really serve the programs fully for Sue and her team, which we're super excited about. We have the childcare center element, so again, hidden in not only in the county, but in New York State, there on the first floor. We have a lot of fun community areas. And I'll move up to the second floor, where our fitness center is projected to be located. You'll see some college classrooms in there to really continue to develop the education and the, really, the post-education in the area, which we know all the benefits of that. And then down next to our fitness center, we've got something special room, I believe, just like in all the other areas, with University of Rochester Medicine, they want to develop their footprint in Livingston County more on orthopedic rehabilitation and performance training standpoints. They want to find a way to work with us, we're keen to have conversations. And then, most recently, our close-knit embosses program has a bunch of students that they have coming up through their orthopedic program that really wants a hands-on experience, and they want to get in and work with the members of our community in the setting as conducive to that. Again, this is not typically when these facilities are built nationwide, from what I've seen, you might have one of these partnerships, and if the project progresses, you know, we'd really have the opportunity to do something special and maximize the community impact. I'll go back, and this is the last piece I'll leave on for the sake of time. And again, I'm always available to answer questions. Is the opportunity for economic impact? So the facility we're building, which, again, I'll show you the first floor layout, you know, is a true center for our community. That's our primary focus. But as you look at where we can go and where we are, you know, we need to be able to find ways to attract outside of our community in this facility. And Norman talked a little bit about that as well, and we included some features in our facility that, you know, maybe some people start coming from the north and the south, a little bit more than the south and the north, if that makes sense in our county. And again, we continue to provide services and goods for our community here to have and grow instead in Livingston County. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Norm Gill, because he doesn't get to spend as much time with you guys as I do. Just a quick hitters of Norm. You can see a fairer sixty years of combined industry experience in his firm. He's been involved in more than 375 communities for planning, construction, and also operation of these facilities. And he's recently completed our study, which will set out digitally the poster. So thank you, and I'm going to bring it to Norman.
Good afternoon. So we have a tremendous amount of experience in studying communities, both for private ventures as well as municipal investments, and trying to be the realist in terms of the motivation of a lot of folks to come through the community and want and responsibility or sometimes don't want to. We actually, we actually, we actually sometimes say, no, this is not a good fit. They have certain access to it, they just modify it, and it'd be much better capital, use of their capital if we could do it. Another element to start off with, I want to lay out the groundwork. Communities generally look at these facilities as one of the things that Don touched on, some of your minds put it in different frames. Is this a quality of life enhancement investment, or is this a economic development or capitalization towards tourism? You want to get teams and organizations from out of market, spending funds, lending, money in the market. After we completed our study, it's pretty clear to us that at this point, there's really not infrastructure in place in moves of hotels and venues to support a large sports tourism type of thing that I drive, which is, it's not here yet. However, a great concern in these facilities, even starting at this level, we have an incubator. There's no reason that we talk to the architects about this design and layout to potentially expand. It's close together, make your community, it's a simple thing to do, that is a difference required to host this. And it does come. So we have tried to right-size this facility for where you are today. And from athletic sample, Don touched on, we have a center focus on the athletic focus. We did dozens of interviews, if I understand, you have a recording, giving a little note to events digitally. But what we concluded here on the left side and the lower is a hard sports component that has two regulation basketball courts that can be converted into floor-based volleyball courts. And one can also, if you can enjoy that, make it some kind of growing. You can also play football, for example. I'm looking to ensure myself in the football. You can also have a game of football, and you can also have general recreation for summer camp. The area above that in the ladder will be a turf component, which will allow for soccer and cross, baseball, softball. You actually get two relay infield events. You're not catching fly balls, you're not entering with the outfielders, it's a pedal man, but you can have regulation infield training. You can play football. Then, once again, just general play, the kids, the ping pong, the hook ball, and other activities. And then to the far right, we are suggesting or recommending a senior sheet run. Again, this does not make this a sports center type of activity, but because of the local demand and enthusiasm and the demand of different objectives, we make the unit as a destination to attract some use. And what's very attractive and fortunate for the economics of this is the price points that these similar facilities and objects are very good. We go to a number of communities and that type of program that the current competition is charging such a low rate is very hard to make these things happen. I will say, again, being the realist in the room, that these facilities are expensive, built expensive to offer. It depends on the degree of operational success is how the cap is standing. Another very elementary statement, which in this case, it's going to be a very tough one. To what degree is the day-to-day criminal in the facility burdened with tests or with the commodities or whatever, I don't know, let me just hold, we, we took it to as different ways of scaling that cap. And then going one step forward, burden, that will also, the operational component, especially when you bring high synergy, does have a significant impact. So I hope I have not been privy to how the impact goes, and are working with Live Well on a very practical model. What we can expect from regular generation and all of that expenses, and then we'll start to fill in the barriers of how that cap is going to look, and/or if, and by amount, might be required on a ongoing basis to provide subsidy for the operations of the facilities in the community that has this asset. At this point, I can answer any questions you might have, clarify, or to, to open bond or why not, if you need clarification.
Yes. Would that be year-round or just season?
It would be year-round. And the idea that I discussed with Don, I think almost every facility is privately that I ran on a day-to-day basis, and that we want to have a deep exposure to the, in very detailed domain of how you run them. We're going into that, except for, generally speaking, the rental law of just renting facilities out to others and users for their activity is the least amount of revenue you can generate. So some assets, you're renting these facilities out to user groups, coffee clubs, etc., but also producing your own program, your own health escapes, your own burn escapes, your own, that is, and some of that to me is very much year-round.
I just got one quick question. How many employees would you would take in one facility like this?
Well, not for a qualifier, if it's a rental model, it's far less than, it's a, you're doing all your own programming, etc. Generally speaking, full-time equivalents, which is the phrase most economic development people want, it would be somewhere between 20 and 30.
Okay.
Probably being four or five full-time. If Don wants to do it all by himself, we said, I don't have to. And it's a video part-time, it gives you personal service, instructors, and referees, etc. I know the college has decided about getting some athletic programs, some of the churches, and sports events, and some of the other
The facilities that you ran, is it a membership model? Do people pay annually, or?
No, it's a, it's a per activity, big, educational league and structural program, and the summer camp is a big for that element. That helps us do two things. One, it makes it a schedule-based facility, it's a very interesting here, with the staff operating, you know who's coming in, you know the staff who's open, because instead of the membership. The fitness component will be your membership line, it'll be coming and go. Generally, other activities are assigned for a specific period of time. And we have, John staggered that ones too, communities seem to be attracted, and there would be one raise of membership for Livingston County resident persons, others that are coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the Florida Agenda, resolutions on the House.
Approving the 2023 New York State Legislative Agenda: Declaring Surplus Property Central Services.
Ask at this time if there's any discussion on the Florida Agenda. Hearing non-ideas or motion in the second, move to the floor.
What's wrong?
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, our rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted.
We have some resolutions that are going to be filed separately, although.
Mr. Knapp, amending the 2023 Livingston County Budget Emergency Management Highway Real Property Tax Services and Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted. Establishing an account, planning, and workforce development.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions on this resolution? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted. Authorizing blanket undertaking.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted. Approving Five Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions on this capital improvement plan? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted. Authorizing and approving a settlement agreement to an action relating to the opioid crisis, TIVA.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions on this settlement agreement? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted. Correcting tax rule of various towns.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 1829, absent 180, adopted.
Still have the two public hearings open. Now I'll ask again if there's any member of the public wishing to comment on any public hearing. Any supervisor at this time wishing to comment on any of the public hearings? Declare the public hearing is closed at this time. We do have one question, any of you, please, Michelle.
Mr. Dunning, authorization to submit a grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Are there any concerns on this action item? Hearing non-the rule, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Antvo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage. Portage. Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparda. Aye. York. Eyes eighteen twenty-nine, absent one eighty, adopted.
We approve, Chairman, what, if we don't, if we don't.
Sure. For the Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council, Michael Falk, Gregory Corr, Bonnie Taylor Davis, Angela Ellis, William Bacon. For the Genesee Transportation Council, David Lefieber and Angela Ellis. For the Genesee Transportation Council Planning Committee, Zachary Cracknow, Angela Ellis, and Jason Wolfhanger. And for the Glow Solid Waste Committee, Daniel L. Pangrazio, Michael J. Falk, Donald Wester, and Catherine Van Horn. All of these terms expire December thirty-first, twenty-third, or two thousand twenty-three. And the county clerk's office has your oath cards ready if you want to stop and do your oath today.
Thank you, Michelle. Ian, other questions at this time?
Yeah, just have one update. If Sherry could join me up here at the podium. Just want to draw your attention to one item, which has had some positive progress already. Related to the legislative agenda, one of the items on here, actually, it has been on in various iterations in years past, and you'll know why, but it says fix and improve the Medicaid rate for nursing home care. Nursing homes in the state have traditionally been underfunded, and the New York State Medicaid rate's among the worst in the state. So I think we get two fifteen, two twenty, something like that per day. The cost of care is three, four hundred dollars range. So for eighty percent of the bed days that we have at the facility, we lose a hundred, a hundred fifty, sometimes two hundred-plus dollars per day per resident. So the feds and the state kind of make up for that in a little bit of a way by doing the IGT, which recognizes it. But there was a positive news development yesterday, bipartisan. I'll just ask Sherry to talk a little bit about and then how we're responding to that as a facility.
So we work closely with our state association, Living Aid, she's very much advocating on behalf of, well, not for profit, which is a state. But they've sent us a lot of information about this. We're looking to get a groundswell of input from families, residents, staff. We have a message that we're distributing today throughout the Brooklyn to our families and our staff and asking them to contact their representatives and the governor to let them know that we support this. We're looking for an increase of an American zero to twenty percent. We've not had an increase. The only increase we've had in the last twenty-seven years is one percent. Now, you can imagine inflation has gone up forty-five percent over the last two years, and that in no way allows us to be competitive to recruit and retain good staff, which we need to get, which is difficult here. So we're trying to get all that information out to families. Sean was very kind to put on our social websites the same kind of links so that people can advocate on our B-GAP. So it's our opportunity to let our representatives and the governor know that we need this support. New York State nursing homes, like other nursing homes throughout the country, are on the verge of financial collapse because we've just not been supported over the years. Hospitals get all the attention, nursing homes a little bit. So we're trying to use this opportunity to really get the message out there. And I encourage all of you, if you want the information, I'm always happy to give it to you. Reach out, support us, get the message out to the governor and your representatives. So, thank you.
Could you send that to the board, please?
Yeah, I will. Yep. So at this point in time, we have a group of Democratic and Republican Assembly Representatives who have taken the governor's state-of-the-state comments and, you know, probably kind of, as their own move, have produced a twenty percent increase proposal, which would be significant. It would be in the millions of dollars for a place like Livingston County, potentially, at full occupancy, probably, you know, much more than that. So we have to push for this, and we will, and there's petitions out there. So we have the documentation electronic form to send out to you guys to get going on. But there was lots of editorials. We just talked about this Monday, which was the twenty-third. And the twenty-fourth yesterday, the press release came out, really unbeknownst to us, that this group was working on something. So hopefully, it has legs. Hopefully, it gains traction. That was all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other business on the board?
Move to adjourn, Pangrazio? Second.
All is in favor? Aye. Posed. Carry it on, meeting's finished, adjourn.